Are we all live, ready to roll? Are we logged in on Zoom? Yes, okay. I will go ahead and call this meeting to order for February 22nd, 2024, and we will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice.
May I have verification of legal notice?
Yes, everything has been properly noticed.
Okay. And we are looking, going over the consent agenda, looking for a motion to approve the, or consideration for the minutes for January 11th.
If there are no more changes on the minutes from January 25th, I would move to approve the minutes from the January 25th, 2024 Planning Commission meeting.
Okay, we have a motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Let the record show that I abstained, please.
Okay, please note that Commissioner Fields abstained, as well as Commissioner Hess is absent today. We will go ahead for public input. This is a chance for anyone, any member of the public to speak on an item that is not on the agenda today. If you would like to bring anything to the Planning Commission's attention, now would be the time to do so. This goes for the Zoom room as well. If you would like to have any citizens' input, you're welcome to raise your hand, and we will unmute you. We are showing no hands in the Zoom room, and our first timed item will, is at 9:05. Before the committee gets started, this is me, Ray Turner, Community Development Director. Just wanted you to know, I am not gone. I am just attending via Zoom today, and y'all look great. Thanks. Thank you, Director Turner. You're coming in loud and clear. Yes. All right, we are now showing a time of 9:05. Our first timed item is consideration of a major use permit, UP 20-77, and mitigated negative declaration IS 20-92 for a two-stage commercial cannabis operation with up to four acres of outdoor and mixed light cultivation, and one self-distribution license applicant Raphael S. Knapp located at 4379 and 4457 New Long Valley Road, Clear Lake Oaks, APNs 006-009-23 and 53. And I do believe we have Andrew Amalong presenting today.
Yes, thank you. Are you hearing me?
Um, yeah, just maybe move it a little closer to you. I think your mic is on, though.
Okay.
I'm getting a thumbs up from Sam, and we're good to go. Thank you, Andrew.
Yeah, no problem. Oh, give us one second. We have the wrong PowerPoint up. So, oh, we got it? Okay.
It should be the Knapp.
Okay, here we are. We are ready to go. Okay, my name is Andrew Amalong. I am the Cannabis Program Manager. Today, I will be presenting UP 2077, Knapp Farms, with the applicant being Raphael S. Knapp, as mentioned. The applicant will be available via the Zoom room following the presentation to answer any questions. His consultant, Trey Sherrill, is unfortunately unavailable. He's out of the country at the moment, so I just wanted to make you guys aware of that. Okay, our agenda will cover the permit request, the project scope, site description, project analysis, some points of interest, cumulative impacts, and then recommendations. The applicant is seeking approval for a two-stage project. The first stage will include four acres of outdoor cannabis canopy, while the second stage will encompass converting two of those acres into 44,000 square feet of mixed light canopy within greenhouses. In the second stage, the outdoor canopy will also include hoops. The project is located approximately four miles north of Clear Lake Oaks and approximately four miles west of Spring Valley, and it's accessed via New Long Valley Road from State The project's base zoning district is rural lands, and the project falls within the Shoreline Community Area Plan. Parcels in proximity of the project are mostly rural lands, however, there are also some agricultural preserve, and just a little further to the north, you can see open space zoning. Surrounding uses are mostly large parcels with some scattered rural residences and also some vineyard activity within the area. The project is located in Supervisor District 3. In terms of site description, the project is situated on two parcels, and it crosses over both parcels. The parcels together combine to make up approximately 99 acres. The parcels are located towards the far end of Long Valley. Long Valley Creek runs through the northern parcel. There are some flood zones in the northern parcel, but they're not, the project site is not located within those flood zones. The project site is located in the flat valley lands towards the northern end of, of the north parcel, or, sorry, the southern end of the north parcel and the northern end of the southern parcel. Okay. And then a little further south than that, you start to enter the foothills that lead into the High Valley Range. The project's scope includes 6,000-square-foot metal processing structure, that will be 60 by 100 in dimension, 12 3,000-square-foot greenhouses, 22,000-square-foot hoop houses, eight 2,500-gallon water tanks for irrigation and fire suppression, one 120-square-foot structure for fertilizer and pesticide storage, 11 standard parking spaces, and two ADA-compliant parking spaces. As mentioned, for the outdoor portion of cultivation, the outdoor canopy will be accessing the ag-exempt hoops, which are now allowed through Ordinance 3132. The hoops can be agriculturally exempt from building permits under certain guidelines. They will be temporary. They can go up for 180 days and must come down after 180 days, and they must meet certain material and dimensional requirements for safety purposes. Existing conditions on the site include an existing well and a dirt driveway. There were previous structures that were burned in what I believe was the Mindo Complex Fire, and there is an existing PG&E hookup on the property. The project analysis encompassed the Lake County General Plan, the Shoreline Communities Area Plan, the Lake County Zoning Ordinance, and state regulations. In terms of the Lake County General Plan, policies reviewed included Chapter 3 on land use, Chapter 7 on health and safety, Chapter 8 on noise, Chapter 11 on water resources. The Shoreline Community Area Plan covered Policy 3.4.1, mixed land use patterns to reduce development pressure on prime agricultural areas, and Policy 4.2.1D, engineered drainage and erosion control plans, to be required where appropriate. For Chapter 21 of our municipal code, the Lake County Zoning Ordinance, Articles 7 on Rural Land Zoning District, Articles 27 on Uses Generally Permitted, Articles 30 on Special Lot Size and Density, and Articles 37, Waterway Combining Districts, were reviewed and analyzed. I should note that Article 30 on Specialty Lot Size and Density did not apply to this Sequa Analysis was prepared for this and found that the project could cause significant impacts to the following resources: aesthetics, air quality, biological resources, cultural and tribal cultural resources, noise, and wildfire. And mitigation measures have been included. A note should be made that there were some technical errors in the original staff report that was circulated. Our principal planner and myself reviewed those, and we, the attachment is a red-lined version of those to make those corrections. With those corrections said, the impacts were not really changed at all, so. Okay, so a few points of interest to keep in mind with this project. The biggest hurdle that it had to overcome, and it really delayed the project for quite a while to get sorted out, is the bridge access. The initial study mentioned that there were two accesses to the project, two bridges to access the project, and one, the neighboring access bridge on the map shown in white, could be used as emergency evacuation route. However, as it turns out, and in response to public comments that we received from circulating the initial study, they do not have the right to use that bridge, but they do have an easement to use the bridge to the north. Now, the bridge to the north, there's an attachment, Bridge Access, I believe it's Attachment 6? Yeah, Attachment 6 covers the details of this bridge. Essentially, it's on a steel structure, and the wood that makes up the bridge is quite deteriorated, and it definitely needs improvements. Currently, it is not really meeting 4290 and 4291 standards, so when we were reviewing it, we, first, I worked with the Building Division, and we decided to go out and take a look at it. After we took a look at it, we just determined it needed to be rated by an engineer to see if it can hold the weight capacity required under 4290 and 4291 standards. The applicant then went and contacted an engineer who provided a stamped letter verifying the rating of the bridge and recommendations on improvements for the bridge. With that being said, let's see, I believe it's Condition A, maybe 26? Let me get the conditions of approval. We've added a condition, basically, that first and foremost, before doing anything, within 90 days, they need to submit building, building plan applications to make improvements on the bridge, and that no other activity on the project should take place until the bridge is completed. Furthermore, also, the neighbor, neighboring access bridge, while it is in a lot, it's in much better shape and it does meet 4290, the driveway going down from the neighboring access bridge is quite steep, and I question whether it meets the slope and the safety and viability of a fire truck coming down that driveway, so. Another point in the initial study that needed to be corrected were the vehicle miles traveled. While technically, the project site is approximately four miles, as mentioned in the initial study, due north, when you look at road miles, it's closer to 16 miles to the closest population center, which would be Clear Lake Oaks. With that said, we did calculate the number of daily trips that the project would generate, made a correction to what was mentioned in the initial study, and it would still come out to be less than significant. Another point of interest that I really didn't bring into the staff report, but it was mentioned in the hydrology study, there is a pond on the property, and this, in the hydrology report, the hydrologist recommended one of two options, the pond as is, which dates back to at least the early 90s, we're not really sure when it was put in. It has some issues, and that either improvements need to be made to correct the condition of the pond, or I guess the pond should be removed and the original water course should be restored. I did bring this issue up with the applicant and their consultant, and there's, you know, you can see where the project site is to the north in the flat area of the valley. It's, it's over 1,300 feet from the pond. They have no interest in using the pond whatsoever, they don't want to make improvements of it, and they're more than willing to restore the natural water course. But with that said, being, you know, not really being a factor for the project and being sufficiently separate from the project proposal, according to Article 51.4, Question 6, which is also in the staff report on mandatory findings, it seemed that it was sufficient enough and separate enough not to bring into the use permit. However, it is on our water resources and our resource planning's radar, so I will continue to work with staff to address it as a separate issue. In terms of cumulative impacts, there are, let's see here, let me grab my notes. I think there are no pending or approved projects within one mile, as you can see, and then there are only two approved projects within a three-mile radius, almost three, but the High Valley Oaks project is just outside of that, so. And yes, I can confirm that, just two approved and no pending projects. With that said, staff's recommendation is to adopt the amended mitigated negative declaration, IS 2092, for the use permit UP 2077 with findings found in the staff report. Oh, there was another note, there was an added condition, the project is located on farmland of local importance. While we don't have specific requirements for that, in order to protect that farmland, when they do construct the greenhouses, an added condition has been put into the conditions of approval that they not be placed on concrete padding, which would essentially ruin the farmland, so.
Awesome.
With that said, staff's further recommendation is to approve the initial study and approve use permit 2077 with the proposed conditions of approval and with the findings found in the staff report. And that concludes staff's presentation.
Thank you. Sure.
Good morning. Michelle Iris, Principal Planner. Just wanted to add one clarification or a comment in response to an e-comment received by Donna Mackowitz in relation to the biological report. We did triple-check the biological report, and it did cover the entire project area that would be impacted or developed with the project. Also wanted to clarify that the bio study, while completed in 2019 and 2020, as she notes, it did occur after the fire, and none of the conditions on-site have occurred. Sequa typically allows studies to be valid for at least five years, so long as nothing on the ground has physically changed that would alter those findings, so just wanted to point that out for the record.
Excellent. Thank you for that. Excellent presentation to staff, I appreciate that. Any questions or comments from the commission before I open it up for public comment?
Just a quick question for Andrew. The parcel for this project, is that also considered APZ, or no?
No, I believe both parcels are rural lands.
Okay, thank you.
There's some APZ up the valley to the west, and some APZ down the valley to the east.
Because for APZ, if it was APZ, it would be greenhouse-only, right?
Well, APZ, Agricultural Preserve, gets confused with FPZ, the Farmland Protection Zone, and the Farmland Protection Zone is not actually a base zoning district so much as an exhibit to an ordinance passed, Ordinance 3101 and 3103, that does require all cultivation within the Farmland Protection Zone and that exhibit, that map, to be conducted within greenhouses with air filtration.
But we're in rural, so.
This is rural area. Basically, the Ag Preserve just refers to the fact that at one point in time, that land was under Williamson Act contract, so.
Oh, okay. Thank you for your question. Any other questions for staff or the applicant before we open it up for public comment? Okay, I will officially open it up for public comment. Anybody wishing to speak on this item is welcome to approach the podium. Is there any hands in the Zoom room? No, no hands in the Zoom room. Did the applicant or anybody want to speak on this item before I close it? No? Okay, we do have a hand in the Zoom room. And Raphael, your hand is raised, we will unmute you.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you. Thank you so much. Please just state your first and last name for the record.
My name's Raphael Knapp, and I just wanted to say thank you to the commissioners, and I'm very excited to be here and have CNN to, a culmination to this years-long process and to get started on this project, and thank you to the Planning Department and Andrew for their diligence and work on this. It's been, it's been really great.
Thank you for your comment. I don't see any other hands in chambers or in the Zoom room. I will close it, excuse me, I will close public comment and bring it back to the commission for discussion or motion. Oh, let me note as well, on your PowerPoint, the address said Lakeport as opposed to Clear Lake Oaks.
I apologize for that.
It's okay, I just wanted to throw that out there.
I just want to thank you, Andrew. I think this is one of the better staff reports I've seen. I had a question about water. In one of the documents, it said the well produces 50 gallons per minute, but then the well test report showed 100. That's still, I think, not enough for four acres, and I, I just want to see, I'd like to see a discussion at some point, maybe not on this specific project, but the hydrology reports take in the numbers that are given to them by the applicant, and maybe it would be better if our staff did the hydrology reports, because then it would be more objective. I mean, this is a problem we run into in just about every project.
Noted.
You have a good point. I am not a qualified hydrologist or hydrogeologist, so I take that information and present it to you guys so you can make the most informed decisions possible.
Thank you.
I have a question for staff. So, one of the concerns that I'm having is with Condition 26, you mentioned regarding the bridge and potential need for improvements. Based off of staff's tour of the site of the bridge, are we talking about major bridge replacement? We're talking Army Corps is going to be getting involved, and I know that's separate from what we're approving here, but that, that does raise a concern for me if we're minimizing the potential impacts of the bridge and alteration of the creeks, if it goes even further, which would impact our environmental analysis. So, what is, what can you provide me in terms of what was visually seen?
Yeah, it's easy to overlook, but in Attachment 6, it's, it's pretty small print. I think that you need point font in the document, or it feels.
Yeah.
The bridge improvements, you know, essentially, the steel structure underneath, the engineer was willing to put his qualifications and his stamp on this letter to say that the bridge can hold that weight. There are further pictures of the wooden planks, and basically, they recommend it that, let's see, severe weather, four-inch by 12-inch by 16-foot square ground contact wood pressure treated lumber, in the pressure treated lumber, sorry, it's not exactly a complete sentence, this can be found here or other codes, to essentially, basically, pull up all the wood that's falling apart, put in new stronger wood, make sure it's 12 feet wide as required, and there need to be railings on the side as required, and the fine-tuned details of that will be kind of worked out when they go through the building permit application. But at this point, it's not anticipated, like, you know, lake and stream bed alteration permit would be required at this point.
Okay, yeah, not, not being engineer, I'm trying to picture what all of that's going to look like, you know, and, so that was just the kind of picture I was trying to, you know, put in my head, and I didn't get a chance to drive out and look at the bridge. I would have liked to, I didn't have the time to do that, so that's one of my main questions.
No, absolutely. It's a, it's a great question. I had the exact same question and spoke to the building official as well as our Plans Examiner about what that could look like, to make sure that that was analyzed, if that would be the case, and they stated that there wouldn't be work within the creek, and as Andrew said, they could replace the planks. If that were to not be the case at, you know, the building permit phase, then we would have to do subsequent environmental review, or potentially, they'd have to get those permits. And that's one of our standard conditions, is getting all of the required permits, including building permits and anything from those agencies you mentioned, but that's not anticipated at this time.
Okay, thank you. And then the last question is regarding Section 2 under Cultural Resources, and maybe this is better for the applicant, I just want to, again, understand how do they plan to address this mitigation measure, Cultural 2? Do they have a plan? Has it been discussed?
I can speak to that in terms of any mitigation measures for cultural resources. You know, an AB 52 notification was sent out. We did not receive any comments on this project, and we really depend on those tribal comments to guide these mitigation measures. But one thing I can note is that, you know, I'm pretty sure that this project falls within ELM territory, and there hasn't been a TPO, or at least my whole time here, I haven't really been contacted with, from anyone at ELM until just recently. They have a new TPO, and perhaps it might be a good idea to put him in touch with Raphael, and I think in good faith Raphael would agree to that, so. Maybe Raphael can speak to that, so.
Can we unmute the applicant, please?
Hello, yes, yeah, I'd be happy to go through that process and, and see what can be done. I would defer to the county on how to, how to go about all of that and protect the archaeological site.
So, do you have a plan yourself, or you're gonna, regardless if the tribe makes contact, do you have a plan to address mitigation measure Cultural 2, to train your staff, or to do any further background training for your staff, or what do you see happening?
I don't have a specific plan for that at this time, but I'm happy to go through that, and like I said, defer to the county and to the tribes to find a way to do that appropriately.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Field?
I read the letter from Phil Moy, Shannon Ranch's, concerns about the terpene taint, and I think these are real, and I don't, I don't want to see our county vineyards being used as an experiment. I mean, they're just 175 feet away. So, I, I think that's something that our, I think it's a legislative issue, I think our Board of Supervisors needs to consider that. I don't see where legally we can make that call, but I wanted to just call attention to that. Page 29 shows a screenshot of an opinion by Rogaway about terpenes. Do you know where that came from? Because it was.
Which document are you referring to?
Well, it's in the.
Comments.
Public comments, but it doesn't.
It was submitted from the public along with their comments, so.
Yeah, I was kind of wondering about that, but I think that's an issue that, you know, the only studies I've seen are the one in Australia regarding eucalyptus, and I'm not a chemist, but it has potential to really affect our, our image and our, our grapes in Lake County, so I think it needs to be explored. Just a comment.
Okay, and it looks like the applicant has his hand raised.
I just wanted to mention, I've also seen the study from Australia, and I'm not sure who submitted the Rogaway link, but the study refers to a study done at Santa Rosa Junior College in June of 2020 that addresses terpene drift from cannabis to grapes, and found that there is no impact, or little impact.
Okay. Thank you for your response. Do you have any questions, Commissioner Chavez?
No further questions.
And do you feel like your questions have been answered sufficiently, commissioners? Yes? Okay.
Is public comment closed?
Public comment is closed, and we are, we are looking for either further discussion or a motion from the commission.
I'm prepared to make a motion if.
There's no further discussion?
I move that the Planning Commission find that potential impacts associated with this project can be mitigated to less than significant through the implementation of the mitigated negative declaration IS 20-77 submitted by Knapp Farms Rafael S. Knapp for the property located at 4379 and 4457 New, New Long Valley Road, Clearlake Oaks, APN 006-009-23 and 006-009-53 will not have a significant effect on the environment and that the Planning Commission adopt initial study IS 20-92 with the findings listed in the staff report dated February, February 8th, 2024.
Okay, motion. Is there a second?
Yes, I'll second that. I'm, I'm not sure the date is correct on that.
The date and the IS number? I got IS 20-77 and then IS 20-92.
I'm referring to the last line. It says the staff report dated February 8th, and I believe the staff report is today's date. That's all.
Okay, we will make that, that note and change.
And as amended today?
Correct. Second. Okay, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Eric.
Motion carries.
I'd like to say a few things here.
I will give you an opportunity to speak as soon as I'm done running my meeting up here and this motion that we're handling. Thank you.
I move that the Planning Commission find that the major use permit UP 20-77 applied by Knapp Farms Rafael S. Knapp on property located at 4379 and 4457 New Long Valley Road, Clearlake Oaks, APN 006-009-23 and 006-009-53 does meet the requirements of Section 51.4 and Article 27 of the Lake County Zoning Ordinance and that the major use permit be granted based on the findings and subject to the conditions included in the staff report dated February 22nd, 2024.
Second. Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Please note that the applicant or any interested person is reminded that the zoning ordinance provides for a seven calendar day appeal period. If there's a disagreement with the Planning Commission, an appeal to the Board of Supervisors may be filed. The appropriate forms and applicable fee must be submitted prior to 5:00 PM on or before the seventh day following the Planning Commission's decision on this matter. Ma'am, we are gonna, we are about to take up our second item. Do you know?
I don't know what goes on here. I live next door on the other side of the creek.
What, do you know the address of the property? Because it could possibly be the project that we are taking up here shortly.
I have the letter that they sent me.
Okay, can you let me know just what the address is, just so I can confirm?
My address?
Sure.
4352 New Long Valley Road.
Okay, so that was the project that we just did, I believe? Okay, so I do apologize. You, you had missed public comment on, on that item.
Yeah.
Yeah. So there is a, there's a process that you can take. There's an appeal process that you can go through if you would like to appeal the approval.
I think it's too big of a project right next to my crib.
I, I understand. And there is an appeal process that you can go through to appeal the approval that just took place. So someone can help you go through that process, or if you'd like to talk to the applicant, you know, you can go ahead and do that. You can probably get in touch with them through the, through staff. They could probably give you some contact information.
Can you give her name and can you come to the microphone?
Yeah, we'll, I'm going to need you to come to the, to the microphone and just state your name for us, just so we, we can get you some information. If you want to leave your information there, we can have him contact you if you'd like. Okay, so if you want to come to the podium, and just, just jot down your first and last name and, you know, an address, and we would be happy to put you in the.
Jot it down on what? There's no paper here.
We'll get you something.
Okay.
And we would be happy to put you in contact with, with the applicant, so you guys could have some open communication.
Sorry.
And when you have a moment, if you could just state your name, just for the record into the microphone.
I don't hear very well, so you'll have to excuse my reaction sometime.
Not a problem. And may you state your first and last name for us?
Yeah, Carol Genesi.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Carol. And as long as you left your information, we will get you in contact with, with the applicant. And again, I do apologize for.
So what are you going to need? You just have, I don't put my phone number. How are you going to get ahold of me?
If, if you would like to leave any additional information, Carol, your phone number and possibly a mailing address, and then we will.
On this paper?
That would be fine. And I will, we will make sure it gets into the right hands. I'm going to continue the meeting now, okay?
Yes, fine, thank you.
Thank you, Carol. Okay, next item we'll be taking up is consideration of major use permit UP 20-20 and mitigated negative declaration IS 20-23, allowing one A-type 3 outdoor commercial cannabis cultivation license and one 13 self-distribution transport-only license. Applicant is Green Lake Exotics located at 19658 East Road, excuse me, Lower Lake, California, APN 012-049-19. Good morning, Mary.
Good morning, commissioners. As you had mentioned today, for your consideration is UP 2020, IS 2023, EA 2023, and EA 2126 for Green Lake Exotics, applicant Nicholas Rosales. The applicant and consultant are both present in chambers today. Today, we'll go over the agenda, which is the permit request, project scope, site description, project analysis, points of interest, cumulative impacts, and recommendations and conditions. The permit request. The project proposes a total of 43,560 square feet of outdoor commercial cannabis canopy within 90,000 square feet of cultivation area and one type 13 self-distribution transport-only license. The parcel size is approximately 22.64 acres. The project site is approximately 1.4 miles northeast from the community growth boundary surrounding Hidden Valley Lake in Lower Lake. The project site zoning designations are general plan rural lands, base zoning rural lands. It is within the Lower Lake planning area and supervisory district 1. The site description. The parcel is moderately sloped within the project area. The property does not contain any Class 1, 2, or 3 ephemeral streams or drainages. The surrounding land uses are largely agricultural in nature and rural residential land. The site is accessed a, sorry, site is accessed via deeded easement. This is the project scope and the site plan for the project. It contains 43,560 square feet of outdoor commercial canopy with 1,000 square feet of outdoor immature plant propagation area. It also contains two 5,000 gallon steel or fiberglass water tank, storage tanks dedicated to fire suppression, a 3,000 square foot processing facility for drying and storage of cannabis with an ADA compliant restroom, 65 square foot composting area, two 150 square foot pesticide and fertilizer storage sheds, an administrative holding area within the processing facility, harvest storage, a security office, and interior roadway improvements that include paved employee parking area. The existing uses of the site are one permitted groundwater well, two 2,500 gallon water storage tanks, a six-foot tall wooden perimeter fence around the cultivation area, a 20-foot wide vehicle gate equipped with latches and padlocks, a 2,000 gallon septic tank approved by the Lake County Environmental Health Department, one 10 by 20 shipping container, one pesticide and chemical storage shed, and established PG&E services. And it's also important to note that the site was issued early activation in 2020 and in 2021. Regulations reviewed for compliance include the Lake County General Plan, the Lower Lake Area Plan, the Lake County Zoning Ordinance, and California State Regulations. The Lake, Lake County General Plan was reviewed in that there are no conflicting policies within the general plan, and there are no specific policies addressing commercial cannabis cultivation within the general plan. The policies and goals reviewed include Chapter 3, land use, Chapter 7, health and safety, and Chapter 11, water resources. The project analysis for the Lower Lake Area Plan was determined by these two policies that you see on the screen. With that summary, the project parcel is roughly 22.64 acres in size and is located outside of the community growth boundary. According to the applicant, the outdoor grow operations would be operating seven days per week during peak season. They would be hiring local contractors during construction and employing up to five individuals during peak season as well. The Lake County Zoning Ordinance was reviewed for project analysis. Article 7 rural lands and Article 27 uses generally permitted. The SEQA initial study found that the project could cause potential impacts to the following resources: aesthetics, air quality, biological resources, cultural resources, geology and soils, hazards and hazardous materials, noise, and tribal cultural resources. A mitigated negative declaration is the proposed environmental determination for the project. All identified impacts can be reduced to less than significant with mitigation measures. Public comment for this project occurred from May 27, 2021 to June 26, 2021. Mitigations are outlined within the staff report, attachments to draft conditions of approval, and attachment 5, draft initial study mitigated negative declaration. Notification of the project was sent to 11 local tribes on September, oh, sorry about that, on September 21, 2020. Tribal consultation was not requested. This project has had an interesting turn of events, and this is something that I really wanted to dive deeper into you guys with, so you could understand it a little bit better. With that, I have a timeline for our points of interest for this project and the scope changes that it underwent. So bear with me on this, please, commissioners. On February 19, 2020, the application was submitted for 43,560 square feet of outdoor cultivation with a 1,500 square foot processing facility. In June of '21, a draft ISMND was prepared and posted to the clearinghouse for the outdoor canopy and a 1,500 square foot processing building. In 2022, the applicant submitted a scope change to add mixed light cultivation and a 3,000 square foot processing facility. On February 16, 2023, a draft ISMND was prepared and posted to the state clearinghouse for the scope change. On May 16, 2023, the County of Lake adopts Board of Supervisors Ordinance 3132 to align with Department of Cannabis Control regulations to allow the option of light deprivation and crop cover for outdoor canopy. Late 2023, the project reverts to the original outdoor proposal incorporating 3,000 square feet of processing facility. In February 2024, the original 2021 draft initial study mitigated negative declaration is updated for the 43,560 square foot of outdoor canopy with the 3,000 square foot processing facility prior to scheduling the hearing. Today, February 22, 2024, the project hearing is scheduled four years after the initial application submission.
If I can just ask a question while we're on the topic?
Go ahead.
The comment period was May 2021 through June 2021? That's, that's what I'm seeing, what you just said. And I'm wondering, that was almost three years ago.
So there was another comment period, and those comments were based on mixed light, which the application is no longer moving forward as. So we reverted back to the outdoor comments, which the project scope had originally been presented as.
Okay, and just another quick question. One of the public comments we received was, why are we, how are we not aware that these projects are being presented to the Planning Commission? I know that it used to be, the publication was in the local newspaper of common circulation or something. How are they circulated now? How are they, is it just posted online on the meeting website?
So with that, these legal notices are posted in the Record B, and they're also sent to the neighbors within 725 feet.
Okay, thank you.
Just to add one thing to that, also, the Red Bud Auto Bond Group has requested to be notified for all of cannabis projects, and we now implement that. This original RFA went out before that was implemented. But I let her know that we're happy to keep including her on everything in the future.
Thank you.
May I continue?
Please, thank you, Mary.
An additional point of interest for this project is the total water usage. The water usage is inclusive of cultivation activities, the processing facilities' needs, and employees' usage. And with that, it is estimated to be 692,077 gallons per year or 2.12 acre-feet per year. An additional point of interest is within the drought management plan, the applicant proposes water-saving measures, including drip line irrigation and a rainwater catchment system. A statement of diversion of surface water for cannabis cultivation is required by the California Water Code, Section 5101. As proposed, the catchment system would supplement the project's water use by an estimated 42,408 gallons or .13 acre-feet per year. Cumulative impacts. Within one mile of the proposed project is one approved and zero pending projects. Within three miles of the proposed project are seven approved and four pending projects. Recommendations. The environmental recommendation is to adopt mitigated negative declaration initial study IS 20-23 for use permit UP 20-20 with findings found in the staff report. Major use permit recommendations: approve use permit UP 20-20 with the proposed conditions of approval and with the findings found in the staff report. And I'm open for questions and comments that you may have.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Yeah, I have a question. So seeing that this applicant was granted early activation in 2020 and 2021, did their operations raise any concerns from the neighbors? Or were there any violations or nuisance raised by any of the neighbors during those years?
So we did receive public comment. However, staff went on-site visits to the site, and it was determined that there were no violations on site.
Thank you.
Commissioner Field, did you have a question or comment for the applicant or staff before I open it for public comment?
Yes, the, under the agency comments, the Water Resources Engineer for the Lake County Water Resources Department, whose name I'm not going to try to pronounce, had a bunch of comments. Stormwater best management practices, locations on plan is missing, the wells yield is, I mean, this is. mean, this is almost four years ago, so I assume they've been addressed. Can you confirm that? She's got a bunch of, it's the very last page of public comment, or agency comments. The well's documents showing it's a legal source are missing, and information on installed monitoring equipment.
Okay, so as far as the stormwater best management practices are concerned, that would fall under the Water Board's general order for cannabis cultivation, so that would be covered under that. The well's yield is located within the hydrology assessment. The well documentation showing that it is a legal source, there is more documentation referring to that within the hydrological analysis. And installed monitoring equipment is missing. At the time, there was a lot of things in question, but well meters are absolutely a requirement. It's within the conditions of approval, and it's something that staff looks for when we go out for annual compliance monitoring inspections, and we record that data as well.
Okay, awesome, thank you.
Commissioner Brown, anything before we open it up for the public?
Yeah, no, I just want to compliment staff on the report. One of the things that I do enjoy and helps me in this process is to identify that there's been no consultation requested. That way, I don't have to ask that question. And then I appreciate that you separate cultural resources and tribal cultural resources, because they're not the same thing. And it's important that when we think about it and see it, that we don't combine them together. So I want to say thank you for that. And also, I do like when there's -- I'm going to refer to the property management plan under 5.2 Cultural Resource Assessment, that a plan was outlined for discovery work plan, protective measures. And so that helps me again in terms of knowing that the applicant is going to respond to any potential situation. So really thankful that that's in there, and I'm not sure why, on some applications, there is no property management plan. But I'm happy to see this. So that's the comment I wanted to make. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Brown.
Okay.
One more.
Yeah, absolutely.
I just wanted to acknowledge the public comment from this Mr. Famasi, John Famasi, wrote a very lengthy letter with lots of interesting details. And I think that, from what I'm reading here, they've been addressed for the most part, but there are a couple issues that are above the Planning Commission level, and they need to be addressed by the Board of Supervisors, I think. So I would suggest to Mr. Famasi that that's where he'd take his issues. That's just a comment.
Okay. Let's just make sure that we have that noted in response to the comment. We will go ahead and open this item for public or for public comment. If anybody wishes to speak on this item, either in opposition or support, you're welcome to approach the podium. And we will give the people in the Zoom room an opportunity as well, but we'll go ahead and handle whoever's in chambers. Good morning, gentlemen. Please be sure to state your first and last name for the record.
Good morning, my name is Nicholas Rosales.
My name is Sergio Ochoa, and I am the co-applicant with Nicholas Rosales.
I just want to say good morning, Madam Chair and Planning Commissioners. Thank you for hearing this use project that's before you today. Should you have any questions, hopefully we can answer them. If not, we could always defer to our consultant to answer anything you guys might have.
Okay. Thank you for coming up to the podium. Commissioner Chavez, did you have any questions?
Yeah, I had a quick question. So you guys had early activation in 2020 and 2021. Was there any activity during '22 and '23? Or was this during the, you know, while you guys were getting the?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, okay.
So for 2023, we did opt-in to put the project on hold during -- due to medical conditions, so just wanted to state that out there.
Thank you.
Okay. I don't have any questions or concerns for the applicant. Anybody else? Is there any hands in the Zoom room by any chance? No hands in the Zoom room. Okay. Thank you for coming up and introducing yourselves, and thank you.
Appreciate it.
Okay, thanks. Did you guys sign your names on the sheet?
I did.
All right, just make sure we get that taken care of. Thank you.
Print.
Yeah. Good morning.
Good morning, Madam Chair and Commissioners here this morning. I'm speaking in support of the project and also on behalf of my clients, you know, who have --
And your name?
-- understood. My name is Karen Mantelli.
Good morning, Karen, thank you.
Yes. Because you can tell by the staff report that they have steadfastly stayed with this project and seen it through the end and discussing, you know, the process timeline. That's proof of their commitment to this project. As the staff did present, the project is respective, you know, of the Lake County Ordinance and all of the development performance standards that are part of that code. The attachments that demonstrate this compliance, and I wanted to just make a point of this, is including those additional efforts that they are proposing as a rain catchment, which is discussed within the drought management plan. Additionally, something that wasn't mentioned, but there's no tree removal that's required of this project, so that's no loss of any trees as well. And additionally, the AB 52 tribal consultation, which, you know, definitely has taken place, and you acknowledge that, with Middletown Rancheria giving the clearance for the project. I believe that was the only tribe that did comment, but they did give their clearance. The applicants do take cultural artifact preservation very seriously, and I believe that they are also willing to reach out to any tribe for any training resources that could be utilized in being able to give their staff and/or their workers identifying, you know, for these artifacts. So, you know, as the only approved project within one mile, this is not a cumulative impact to the area. So I ask that staff that you approve and go with staff's recommendation to adopt the mitigated negative and approve the use permit 2020 today with the proposed conditions. I will sign my name.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, can y'all hear me?
Yes, we can hear you great.
Okay, well, first of all, good morning, everyone, and my name is Milton Contreras, and I'm here to vouch and endorse for the applicants, specifically Sergio Ochoa. As you can see, as I'm going to talk right now, I drove two hours, right, far away from here to vouch for him. I've known him for 10 years throughout my journey and getting to know Sergio Ochoa. He has been such a great help with me, specifically in the fact that, you know, he's very involved in the community, as I am myself. I'm a community advocate and a healthcare advocate. Throughout the years, I have been helping at the San Jose Junior College, as that's where we met and that's where we know each other, specifically in the multicultural center. He's very involved within the community, and he always tries to do everything very in an ethical manner. Thanks to his help and support, I am proud to say that I am a human biologist, and I am in the pursuing of getting a medical doctorate, because I take healthcare very seriously. So I was with him as well, and I just want to say that he has been such a great help throughout it. Without him, I wouldn't be at the position that I am. And as, you know, he wants to pursue myself with me becoming a doctor, I want to pursue with him, you know, trying to do everything. He's always been trying to do everything for the community and himself, family first. And, you know, he takes healthcare very seriously, as I do as well. So thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Public comment is still open if anybody would like to speak on this item. Any hands in the Zoom room? Did you want to speak on this item? No? Okay. Just wanted to make sure. I will officially close public comment. I appreciate everyone taking the time to speak.
I was just saying, I have a frog in my --
Oh.
I'm not making any progress today.
I apologize. So, public comment is closed. Any further discussion amongst the Commissioners, or if anyone is prepared to make a motion? Further discussion?
Yeah, I feel like this project is, you know, pretty straightforward. The applicants look like they're, just from the history of having early activation and, you know, experience on this, on their project, feel pretty comfortable with moving forward with this project. Are there any other comments from the Commissioner?
I'll just kind of echo what you said. I do appreciate the timeline and kind of breaking it down for us to kind of see what's happened. And as we all know, the, this ordinance and compliance and everything has definitely had its ups and downs and changes, so that does show a lot. I do appreciate that, and it does show your commitment and persistence. Definitely a good quality.
Commissioner Brown, do you have anything to add?
No, I don't.
Okay. All right.
Madam Chair, I'm prepared to make a motion. I move that the Planning Commission find that the potential impacts associated with this project can be mitigated to less than significant through the implementation of the mitigated negative declaration, IS 20-23, submitted by Green Lake Exotics, Nicholas Rosales, for the property located at 19658 East Road, Lower Lake, APN 012-049-19, will not have a significant effect on the environment, and that the Planning Commission adopt initial study IS 20-23 with the findings listed in the staff report dated February 22, 2024.
I'll second. Can I second? There's a motion and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries?
A further move that the Planning Commission find that the major use permit, UP 20-20, applied by Green Lake Exotics, Nicholas Rosales, on property located at 19658 East Road, Lower Lake, APN 012-049-19, meets the requirements of Section 51.4 and Article 27 of the Lake County Zoning Ordinance, and that the major use permit be granted based on the findings and subject to the conditions listed in the staff report dated February 22, 2024.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Please note that the applicant or any interested person is reminded that the zoning ordinance provides for a seven calendar day appeal period. There's, excuse me, if there is a disagreement with the Planning Commission, an appeal to the Board of Supervisors may be filed. The appropriate forms and applicable fee must be submitted prior to 5:00 p.m. or before the seventh day following the Planning Commission's decision on this matter. Thank you, staff. Excellent presentations today. And thank you, everybody, for taking the time to come to your hearings and support each other today. Director Turner, would you like to take the floor for our other timed items or office news?
Yes, thank you, Chair. I have a department update.
If you could, Director Turner, let's just give everybody a chance to kind of file out, and then we will be able to hear you better. So just stand by. Ah, okay, Director Turner, out there in Zoom world?
Good morning.
Good morning.
It says that I can't do my video, but that's okay. I can just talk to you.
We'll just assume that it's you.
Yes, thank you. We are working on confirming dates for the kickoff meetings with the Planning Commission and the Board for the general plan updates, and we're looking at dates in March.
Okay.
So with the Planning Commission, it'll probably be on the 14th and 26th, going before the Board. We're also confirming dates, times, and locations for the local area plan kickoffs. And as I may have told you before, we're using the municipal area councils as like the first launch point for these meetings.
Right.
Those are going to take place in the middle of April, and what I'm hoping is that you would be up for helping us just spread the word throughout your district. We will get you those confirmed dates and times for each of the area plans as soon as we do have them ready. And then if you can just shout from the rooftops and help generate public interest, that would be wonderful.
I think that's great.
Yes, we are very excited about it. And Michelle has been working pretty hard trying to herd the cats to make sure that it all comes together. And then lastly, next week, 27th, is my annual evaluation, so you have one week to get, reach out to your supervisor and tell them if you think that they need to give me the heave-ho.
Copy that.
Yeah. And that's all I have for this week. Oh, though I would like to welcome back Danae Ladulchi.
Yay!
We brought her back as a team member for Ruby, and I am so thankful that she was willing to come back and help us, because she's got the institutional knowledge that is very valuable in our department. So, welcome back, Danae.
Yes, thank you, Ms. Danae. And Director Turner, thank you for zooming in, and I know personally, I'm excited to, you know, get the word out and, you know, really kind of educate people on what the GPAC is and what the general plan is. You know, this is everybody's opportunity to really speak and be heard. So the more that we can, you know, get excited about it and get people's input, I think the better off we all are. So your efforts definitely go noted.
Thank you very much. It is vital that this be a community vision-driven document, and we can't do that without public participation. So that remains our top priority as we move forward.
You got it. We are your little worker bees, so you just let us know what we got to do.
Awesome.
Okay. Well, do you have anything else to add? Or with your permission, I can go ahead and adjourn this meeting.
That concludes my update, thank you.
All right, thank you, Director Turner. We will go ahead and adjourn this meeting at 10:07. Thank you.